June 3, 2014. Can we please have the roll call?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Sam Crawford?
Here.
Pete Cremon?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Here. The people will stand and join me with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of items, housekeeping items. If you have your cellphone and you want to put it on silence so we don't listen to a lot of silly music this evening, that'd be great. And if you're handing out paperwork during the open session or any other time, if you can give a copy to our clerk also, that would be good. We had a committee of the whole meeting just now, a discussion with our senior deputy prosecutor, Karen Frakes, regarding an appeal of the growth management hearings board case. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of some minutes, the minutes of the regular county council meeting for May 6th, which is the orange corrected copy in our packet, a special county council meeting for May 13th, and a committee of the whole meeting for May 20th. Is there a motion to accept those or any discussion?
One discussion.
Uh-huh.
On the minutes, I had mentioned that I had been to the 9/11 museum and actually the correct thing is I'd been to the original small one.
Right, and that's the correction that's in this orange copy here.
That's what I thought.
So, any other corrections or is there a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes.
All right. So, there's a motion to accept the minutes with that one correction? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. We're on to our open session. This is where members of the public can come up and address us with whatever issue you want, except the one about the terminal out at Cherry Point. You each get three minutes. As you come down, you can use either microphone, line up and come down, and then you'll get a warning when you have about 30 seconds left. When you come up to the microphone, if you give us your name and spell your last name if it's more complicated than Jones or Smith. So, who wants to lead us off this evening? Mr. Brown? Greg Brown, Watcom County.
I just wanted to comment again. You did have the special meeting on the hearings board case. I want to remind you, it's kind of gone into hiding and there are special meetings going on with the plaintiffs and stuff, and I want to remind you that please protect the interests of the public of Watcom County and do not settle this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, come on, you can't let us off the hook that easy this evening.
Sure.
Good evening, Paul Schistler. I'm an, excuse me, independent contractor and housing advocate, or at least I'm here with that hat on. I just wanted to say thank you to the county for supporting the idea of regional cooperation on housing affordability issues because, as the packet shows, it'll make us eligible, we hope, for additional non-local matching grant funds, which will be very helpful, new revenue for existing programs. But it'll also set us up for some other opportunities that we don't have now. So, it's, I think, almost no risk to the county, but a lot of upside potential, and I'm really happy to see the packet and your committee being this afternoon recommending approval. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does anybody else come on down and stand at the sign so we...
Yes, so we don't have to...
I just had a few comments on glyphosate...
Name?
Oh, Gaethje Weiss, and I live in Bellingham. And I just had a few comments on glyphosate or Roundup. And I think that this is one of those complicated situations where the county has to figure out how to take an informed but cautious approach. I think any, the use of any herbicide or pesticide requires a good understanding, not only of the product, but also the environment in which it's supplied. And so, I think the big overall problem for the county is that it speaks to the need for the county to have good watershed and ecosystem analyses, and then the ability to make informed decisions at individual sites. The active ingredient in glyphosate inhibits an enzyme that's involved in plant amino acid synthesis, and so it's effective only on growing plants. But it's also true that with heavy lobbying, in my opinion, herbicide and pesticide manufacturers have managed to have a very restrictive disclosure of what is in their products, and so everything that is not the actual intended supposed active ingredient is labeled inert. So, if you look on a label, it usually says it contains 95 or so percent inert ingredients. But that isn't a conventional definition of inert, and it doesn't mean that those things aren't active. It just means that they're not going to tell you what they are, and so that's a problem. It's also true that over time, things decompose, and it's, for example, in the Gulfolio spill, they're discovering that the decomposition products of the oil, which initially were not detected, and they thought, oh, everything is hunky-dory, turn out to be serious problems. And that can be true here. But again, the way our research system functions, it's hard to get funding to look for these kind of obscure things, and so a lot is unknown. In terms of spraying, roadways usually are accompanied by roadside ditches, and roadside ditches lead to aquatic systems like streams or ponds or swamps. And so, there is a possibility of runoff. Glyphosate does bind to soils, but sediments can be carried by running water, so that in itself is not a perfect solution. There also can be...
30 seconds, please.
Okay, so I just think it's hard to prove harm. I don't think it should be absolutely banned everywhere. I think it should be very restricted, and great caution should be used, and I think you're going to have to hire intelligent people to figure that out.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to close the open session. We're going to move on to our regular business. Let's see, consent agenda from finance committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the finance administrative services committee met today, considered items 1 through 5 on the consent agenda, recommended approval of all 5 items, 3 to 0, and I would so move.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I'm gonna...
Would you please pull number 1?
Number 1, okay. Anybody else? Okay, so we are voting on the consent agenda items number 2 through 5. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. Okay, on to number 1.
The committee, as I said, considers item number 1, which is the contract with Kibble and Prentice, a USI company for benefit consultation services, and we recommended approval of this item 3 to 0, and I would so move.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
We've had these people supposedly helping us for years now, and I just have been very unimpressed, and so have a lot of the employees when they've talked to them, and I, we got lots of complaints. I haven't seen that they're doing any better. Maybe they are, but I haven't seen it. And so, the last time, and without that, it says, oh, well, they're less expensive than somebody else. Well, sometimes we do get what we pay for, and I am so unimpressed with this group that I'm not willing to support it right now.
All right, any other discussion? We have the motion in front of us. See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, that passes 6 to 1 with Ms. Brenner opposed. On to natural resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had one item before us today, and that was a resolution approving the Portage Bay Shellfish Recovery Plan. The committee unanimously voted to recommend this to the full council, and I would so move.
All right, we have that motion in front of us. Any questions, discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7 to 0. Back to finance.
Okay, the ordinance amending the county code regarding purchasing to modify the requirements for bid specifications was not acted upon by the committee. No motions were made. I don't think we can do much on that anyway because there's not even any numbers in the draft or the, yeah, the proposed draft, so I guess there's just no action to be taken on that. Caught me off guard there because it's listed as an ordinance, like we were going to approve it tonight or something.
Yeah, I guess Ms. Brenner has...
We'd have a hearing on that anyway, wouldn't we, if we, no? It's just one of those things we can do.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I just want to make it very clear. My intent on bringing this forward was not to control what the limit would be, but to get an idea of what people think a limit should be. I don't think there should be hundreds of thousands of dollars, million dollars, here or there, being allowed to go be signed off on without coming to the county council first. I don't care if it's grant money, or if it's general fund money, or road fund money. I just think that we are little by little, I don't know how well you guys have been following our reports on the contracts, but they were an eye-opener for me, and we just first, we started getting them just this year, I think it was. So, we never saw them before, and it's quite a bit of money that doesn't even come to us. I have a real problem with that. I would definitely be happy to, you know, flesh it out more, but I didn't feel like anybody was really interested, except maybe, maybe Councilmember Cremon. I don't know. So, I didn't, you know, I don't want to waste my time.
Mr. Crawford?
I wouldn't make any conclusions about how interested we are. I think we'd like some specificity, and I say that because I think maybe you're perceiving an issue about what we look at, and I'm going to add, he can't just sign hundreds of thousands. However, there's some exceptions that allow him when there are continuations of contracts and things like that. But in any case, with more, a more specific proposal, and to get through the finance committee, I'll say right now, and I know you already know this, that we will be vetting any specific proposal through the administration for an analysis of what the impacts of our time and our review, as well as how that facilitates or doesn't facilitate purchasing by the county. We would need that type of analysis to consider that before we move forward. So, I just want to say, if you feel strongly about it, get the specific things that we're looking for, particularly numbers or limits or whatever you have. Let's get it out there. I would suggest, before we even meet about it in finance, get it to the executive so that he can have his staff look at it, and then we can have a good discussion about it in finance.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, the executive mentioned today that he would get those other months. We got, I think it was January, I forget which, we got one month of his, the numbers that he provided, and he said he would get the rest of the numbers to us. Soon as I get those, I'll work on it. I'd be glad to, as long as there's a majority that's not saying absolutely no way.
Didn't hear anybody say absolutely no way.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right.
All right, the next item was an ordinance, amending ordinance 2013-27 to establish the Superior Court, Fourth Judge Courtroom Renovation Project Fund, and establish project-based budget for the Superior Court Fourth Judge Courtroom Renovation Project. And that's probably the longest name of a project fund we've ever had in this county. So, the committee considered that 3 to 0, and I would move that we establish the Superior Court Fourth Judge Courtroom Renovation Project Fund.
All right, can't someone come up with a sexy acronym for that?
Oh, I hate acronyms, please, no.
All right.
S-C-F-J-C-R-P-J.
All right, that's good.
That's not sexy.
All right, any other discussion on this? I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Looks like there's one more from finance.
You didn't announce the vote.
Oh, the announce was unanimous, the vote was unanimous in favor.
Okay, the last item was the ordinance amending the 2013-2014 Watcom County Budget 11th Request to Appropriate $1,422,464 to Fund a Transfer from Non-Departmental to Superior Court Fourth Judge Remodel Project Fund. Committee considered it, recommended, or voted to recommend approval 3 to 0, and I would so move.
All right, the motion's in front of us. Any discussion? Guess we're ready for the roll call.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Yeah, you count too.
I do, I do.
That passes unanimously. On to planning and development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had three ordinances to bring forward today. The first is an ordinance repealing the 1994 Eliza Island Plan and amending provisions in the Watcom County Comp Plan and Zoning Code relating to the plan. And we approved this 3 to 0, and the motion is to forward this for concurrent review, and I so move. And if I could speak to what's going on here, it's not like we don't care about Eliza Island anymore, it's just that the, most of the information and some of the land use designations in this sub-area plan are obsolete and covered in the comprehensive plan and in an effort to streamline some of our large amounts of bookkeeping. We're just going to repeal this plan and go with the comp plan, which is much more up-to-date.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this? Ready for the roll call?
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
The next one is an ordinance repealing the 1991 South Fork Valley Subarea Plan, and I recommend we, well, I move that we forward this for concurrent review.
All right, same as the last one, just a different area?
Correct.
Any discussion? Ready for the roll call?
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
And the last one is an ordinance repealing the 1982 Lake Watcom Subarea Plan, and I move that we forward this for concurrent review.
All right, same thing, one more time. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Pete Cremon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Now, if we can do this one just as quick, we'd be all set. Oh, I guess we're doing boards and commissions. I thought we were on to the slaughterhouse.
Yeah, good luck.
We have one item on this. It's a nomination and appointment to fill a vacancy on the Portage Bay Shellfish Protection District Advisory Committee, and the applicant is Andy Ross.
I move approval.
So, we have the motion to appoint Mr. Ross. Any discussion?
Oh, do we appoint or we confirm? Okay, yes.
We nominate and appoint, apparently.
Yeah, we nominate and appoint.
Well, I do both. He's great.
You move to nominate and appoint, all right? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7 to 0. Introduction items.
Move acceptance.
I'd like to just, let's do 1 through 7 first and talk about the slaughterhouse one separately.
Okay, we're going to pull out number 8, the slaughterhouse, and vote on introduction of 1 through 7. Any other items to be pulled out? Okay, all in favor of those introductions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimously. Now, on to number 8.
So, in planning committee today, we discussed this again, and we had a recommendation to introduce this substitute version, which is the yellow version you have here. The change that was made was, before, in the agricultural zone, you could do it as, only as an accessory use, and we put a limit on the total number that could be in existence in the ag zone, and that had never really sat well with me, and it also prevented the possibility of having a standalone slaughterhouse, which I thought was probably a better business model and going to get a, had some serious benefits for the operator and for the environment. So, this substitute version changes the version in your packet by moving, but keeping everything the same, except that to have a slaughterhouse in the agriculture zone, you would need a conditional use permit, and it would no longer need to be an accessory use, and it would no longer need to, there would be no cap, no government mandated cap on the number that there could be. So, that's, I, 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 yeah, that's what I did. That's what we did. We voted 2 to 1. So, I would move we accept that version for introduction and a hearing.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, it sounds very good. The problem is, for the very small ones, there aren't going to be very small ones because conditional use process for something like this will be extremely lengthy and expensive, and someone who's able to do, and, you know, be able to do it very well, a small one, I don't, I'm not even sure they'd, they'd want to go through that process because it's so long and convoluted. And we know that because we get appeals about conditional use permits all the time, and this has been one of the most controversial ones. So, I still feel like, well, I'm the one who voted against it. I feel like we should have a threshold under which it would be done by administrative approval. So, that's my problem. Other than that, I think it's fine.
Mr. Mann?
And I don't disagree with Ms. Brenner on this. One of the reasons I, well, I struggled with that issue, and one of the things I learned was that, you know, an administrative approval permit can also be appealed, and then it goes to the hearing examiner as well, anyway. And given how controversial this is, as you've pointed out, you know, you can, I'll bet you any amount of money that any administrative permit is going to be appealed, and it's going to be a long and convoluted process, no matter what. And I, I, I don't disagree with you. I would like to see some simple way that we could have a small accessory use slaughterhouse, but given everything we've learned and researched and studied on this, on this topic, I don't think there is an easy way to just have a simple, easy permitting process for one of these operations. And I wish we could, but I can't support something that's, doesn't have a high degree of review. So, that, that's, that's where I come down on it.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, they can both end up at the hearing examiner, but the administrative approval one goes through our staff. The conditional use one goes through a process right away that, you know, goes to the hearing examiner. It's a longer process. It always is, even with things that aren't really controversial. So, I don't know, I think we've got to throw a little bit of a bone, no pun intended, of course, to the people who want to do this.
All right, so the motion in front of us is to subs, put the, to introduce the substitute yellow version this evening. Any other discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, that passes 6 to 1 with Ms. Brenner opposed. We're on to the committee reports, other items, and council member updates. Anything from any of the other committees first? Ms. Brenner?
From Public Works, Safety, Capital Projects, whatever, and Health, how many names do we have now? We had, first, we had a discussion regarding the use of Roundup, and I'm not going to try and say that name because I have trouble with it, but it's that, it's the pesticide that is used on some county roads. I would appreciate, it would be really nice if you would say what you said at the meeting because you reminded me of the history of it and how far we've come, and I thought your comments were excellent. If you don't want to do them, I'll try and stumble through them.
Well, if I can remember what I said this afternoon, I will try.
You talked about how, you know, we're only using...
Right. No, what I said is that every year or every other year, when this integrated pest management plan comes up for what we do on our roads, we hear the same concerns about the use of Roundup and spraying, and that, you know, our program has actually won awards for working to reduce the level of spraying. We've been through this, and the roads people, along with the weeds folks, have really worked hard to reduce spraying. People have the opportunity to opt out of the spraying. We use it as little as possible, and we have not been able to find a good alternative. I think a number of us on the council share the concerns about using any herbicide or pesticide, but we haven't found another alternative that's cost-effective. I went back and looked at the minutes from 2006 because I knew we had talked about this, and we actually invited the Washington Toxics Coalition to come up and review our plan in 2006, and they gave us great kudos for how far we'd come in being one of the few counties that actually has a plan to work to reduce the use. So, I may check in with them again today because they were tracking each county, and there were a couple of counties that weren't doing spray at all, just to see what's changed in the last, you know, eight years. But last time they looked, they were giving us kudos for what we did.
Yeah, because I, you know, there were a lot of upset people and concerned about the use of it, and I do feel, and I really appreciated what Gaethje said, you know, we have to be really careful. I'm not sure we can't use it at all, I don't know, but we're going to get, the Public Works person who made the presentation is going to come back with responses to the comments that were received today. So, I think we should at least let that happen and then discuss where we want to go from there. The other issue that we discussed in that same committee was the possibility, potential of putting a crosswalk in on Lakeway in the Parkstone area that would be safe, and we did make a recommendation, a request, if Public Works could bring forward some more analysis of where would be the best place. I think it should probably be something, though, that the whole council votes on. It was a, it was a recommendation to have Public Works bring forward to us, there are several crossroads in that area, and for them to bring forward a recommendation of where they think, because there's a crosswalk, I don't know, there's, there's two crosswalks, one in the city and further out in the county, and this would be in between. So, they could analyze to see what would be the most centrally located to do something like that, and I would appreciate it. So, I'm going to make a motion that we request that information from Public Works. I'm not, we can't demand it.
I thought we've talked about this two weeks ago.
We did, and we had a presentation today.
And we voted...
We did, we did all that.
For Public Works to come up with alternatives.
We did.
We did.
So, what's the difference?
Now, we're interested in, in that area, in that general area, figuring out where the best place for a crosswalk would be and...
And what was, what did we vote on last time?
And do it some analysis. What?
And what did we vote on last time?
Just for them, not just, but for them to come forward with three different options of how to do it, not where to do it, but how to do it.
We've chosen how to do it, now we want to figure out where.
Yeah.
How are we, and we're voting how now?
Voting to request them to look at that area and see where they think would be the best place to put the crosswalk.
But Ken, you just said we decided how.
Like what traffic control device?
We decided that?
Not really, no.
Well, in committee, we said, assume it's going to be option 2, which was a flashing amber light. If you were going to put a flashing amber light, you know, an actuated crosswalk on this stretch of road, where, where would you put it? Where would it be effective and safe and affordable?
Okay.
And we're not bound by option 2, but it was the one that, they felt option 1 was really dangerous, and option 2 had the blinking light, so it seemed like it was a lot safer. Option 3 was the Cadillac, and...
And as part of that, are they going to do the analysis to see if any of those areas warrant such a crosswalk?
No, we already made it, like, we made a decision, we want one in the area.
Okay, because I thought they hadn't done that yet either.
No, and we did not make a decision.
Well, they just don't want to, no offense, but they don't want to do it at all. I'm just saying, you know, and I'm, to me, it's not a political issue, it's a, it's a health and safety issue. We have made so many, you know, commitments to trying to protect the lake walk and watershed, Waukam watershed, and it's really funny because somebody said, right by where they need the crosswalk, there's a sign that says, get out of your car, and, I mean, we just, it may not be inexpensive to start off with, but, you know, how do, you gotta measure that against the environmental improvements that it would cause, and one of the things that bothered me was this thing that they did, that they went out there and decide, counted people walking across the road, well, very few people are young enough, brave enough, and everything else enough to even go across that road, so it seems very important for us not to go by a preconceived idea about who would use it or how many people would use it. You build it, they will come, you put something in there like that, and people who wanna ride that bus will, will do it more.
Mr. Crawford?
Maybe I misunderstood you, or maybe you misspoke, I think I heard you say, we've already decided we wanna do it. This council has not decided that we want to put in a crosswalk yet, so I hope that's, that's clear.
Okay, we voted unanimously to, to ask them to do the options, how's that?
Okay, secondly, it's my hope that, and I, it's not a hope, I have confidence our Public Works Department will be very frank with us about, you can put a crosswalk in a location and be, cause more of a hazard if it's on short sight distance things, and I empathize with neighbors who live near a busy road, but we've also got to apply accepted engineering standards for, for this, and make sure that that's, that's, in other words, if, if there's an engineering standard that's not being met here, we need to know about that and, and deal with that very straightforward and very honestly, so I hope that's part of it. I would, I would be more comfortable if you would just say, continue to look at options as well as locations, rather than assume that with one option for this blinking light, that now we're going to say, which location are we putting it at? I, I'd like to leave everything open and on the table at this point on this thing, because I think it needs a lot of study. My experience in transportation funding and making decisions on these things is, it really needs a good look by the folks that really understand and have worked with these things and understand what is the most effective, and not our preconceived, or quite frankly, the neighborhood's preconceived idea about what is most appropriate there. For example, we've had in the past and continue to have neighborhoods that say, we want you to install speed bumps, but when we have looked at those at times, I'm thinking of Francis McLeod Road, just nor, or just east of Squallicum High School, it, the hazard that that was gonna create was gonna be greater than the benefit of having the speed bump in there, and we chose to go with more enforcement and some other things at that point, rather than installing the speed bumps. So I'd like to look at this, I'm very open to the idea, if we can create a safer environment for folks who live in the area, and it's proportionate to all the other needs in the county in terms of where we can do safety improvements, and we say, let's, let's put a magnifying glass on this one and raise this, elevate this to the level of a priority, I'm fine with that, but let's be careful about assumptions that we've already decided we're gonna do it, or that we've decided on a particular option, or a location, or whatever the case may be.
Mr. Mann?
I would just wanna clarify a little bit of what Ms. Brenner said, and Mr. Crawford is right, we did not decide on any, anything, and we left open very clearly the option of doing nothing. As far as the option of, or the respect for the uniform manual of traffic control devices, Public Works has made it very clear that they don't think it meets the technical requirements and standards for a crosswalk here. So what we did today, my memory, Ms. Brenner, was that we were all leaning towards option number two because option number one was clearly not robust enough in 50 mile an hour traffic, that's posted at 35, but everyone goes a lot faster, and the third one, we ruled out mostly because it just seemed extremely expensive, so I don't, control device number two was our preferred method, and we said, please shift your field of study up to Oriental Avenue and do a study and account there, because I don't, I think it had been five or 10 years since the last one was done, so I, I recall our direction was, you know, with number, with device number two in mind, please do a study on Oriental Avenue and find out what counts are there for potential pedestrians, and we'll, we'll take it from there, and it's gonna come back to committee, and we told them not to rush, they said it would take a while, they got a lot of other traffic counts we're doing, we said, great, you know, we're interested in this project, but we're not elevating it to bump any other projects or anything like that.
I think the executive wants to speak.
Public Works staff and the administration is going to work on behalf of the Public Works Committee, and what they asked for this afternoon was for us to take another, is to take a further look at different areas on there. We're going to do that, I guess, with or without a vote tonight, I don't think that the vote is necessary at all.
Exactly.
It's just, it's part of working with the committee, we were asked a few weeks ago to give our recommendations, we did, we came back with further information today, and the committee asked for some more information regarding it, and we're going to, we're going to provide that for the committee, and then ultimately, I would guess that the committee would make a recommendation and bring it to the full council for a vote at a future date, so I, I think that, understand getting buy-in from the full council may be nice, but I don't think that it's needed in this particular situation, and I'd just say that we will get back to the committee, and you'll hear about it at a future date.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Well, that's just fine with me, I'm, I was only making it as a motion because I have been scolded at times for assuming a committee was gonna have the authority to do these kinds of things without getting the consent of the majority of the full council. Also, I think it really is important, we just voted for a stop sign that was not appropriate according to Public Works, although they said at the time, we could, you know, use other reasons for doing it, so I think in this case, some of us are using other reasons that I think are extremely important, I do not consider them political, and I think that it's really important for us to keep an open mind about that, whatever that meeting, that test that Public Works says it needs to meet. We've gone a different direction than that before, so we're not, we're not obligated to meet some kind of, you know, standard that Public Works says is best, no offense to Public Works, but there are a lot of issues besides that Public Works one.
All right, sounds like we're good to go on this issue.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Any other reports from any other committees? Mr. Brown?
Let me pass this out. So the Washington, Washington State Parks Recreation Winter Program has an opportunity for us to secure funding for winter park access, and the Parks Department has asked if the council would write this letter of support for that, and if everybody's in favor, then I guess it would just come and cancel that.
Are you making that as a motion?
As a motion, yes.
All right, so there's a motion to write a letter of support for these groomed trails.
Hey, we don't have seconds, but I'll second this one. Wow, thank you.
Well, wait a second.
Somebody wants to actually read it before they vote?
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
I've read it. I did read it.
I just wanna make sure, well, I just got it, so can I ask a question?
Can we do a motorcycle?
This, if we, this is our support only, this is not about any money from us.
Any other of your personal budget?
What?
No, 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 Councilmember Brenner.
Oh, not, oh, no, no, not reading, but I mean, I'm open to letting them pay for it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the council sending this letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes unanimously. Any other items? Why don't we just start at your end, Mr. Brown?
And then the only thing, only other thing I'd like to do is acknowledge that the owner of Brigadoon, Brigadoon Service Dogs, a local business, was recognized for work in providing dogs to wounded warriors for rehabilitation at the state level by Senator Patty Murray, last week.
Cool. Anything? Nothing? Nothing from me?
Okay, first, I would encourage you guys next year, 'cause it happens every year, to attend the first salmon ceremony. It was one of my favorite times going to it, I couldn't, the Lummies put on an incredible program, the salmon was delicious, of course, but we were, it was really interesting, we were very warmly welcomed, and I, I feel like Tim Blue is doing an incredible job as chair of the Business Council, so I was very impressed. The other thing is.
And the date is?
What? Oh, it already happened, it just, I just went.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. And then there was, okay, I don't need to talk about that, the YWCA just celebrated its 35th year in operation, that was pretty incredible, too, and the other night, I went to the North County, to Linden, to, there was a discussion on a kinda different kind of proposal for a water plan, and I think some of you know about it, about the potential of the other aquifer that Birch Bay has access to, being able to use that to maybe offset and increase the water flow that goes into the aquifer that goes to the McSack River, so, and to other, and other parts of the county. It sounds like a win-win, and I'm hoping that we can get a discussion going in the county here. I, I keep going to these meetings where people are talking about it, but it would be great, trying to think what department that would be, actually, the executive was there, maybe he can figure out what was the best department, what's the best department to bring, you know, a recommendation, I thought it was interesting, very interesting.
So do you want a briefing to the council on it, is what you're talking about?
I would love it, yeah, what he said.
And I think a lot of us have been briefed individually, maybe.
I have too, but I would like a briefing coming from government, because, you know, most of the.
Well, I'll be glad to reach out to them.
I didn't trust government earlier today.
I don't, but I gotta start somewhere.
I'll be glad to reach out to them, there were some, some issues with them about when it was ripe to start making it more public, but they made it pretty public.
Uh, yeah, it was very public the other night.
Anything, Mr. Cremmon?
I just fully support Councilmember Brenner's request to get a report from the government.
Wow.
I mean, I mean that, I, I, I'm serious when I say that, I mean, I'm not just being facetious, that too, but I mean it too.
Mr. Crawford?
A couple things, I emailed you all this afternoon, the thoughts, my little survey on kennels being allowed in ag districts in other agricultural counties, as well as some language I threw together yesterday, and then when I reread it today, it didn't sound very good, but I sent it to you anyway, but anyway, I'd love to pursue that discussion in the future. Wanted to mention something to our Public Works Director, Frank, at the state meeting I was at this week, there was some discussion, this covert replacement for fish, fish passage has been somewhat delayed, I guess, in implementation, but the word in Olympia is, that is culminating in, you know, there's gonna be deadlines and all kinds of stuff, and for the Transportation Improvement Board, as well as the County Road Board, it's, it's gonna be challenging because there are so many municipalities that aren't going to be able to even come close to affording what this is gonna cost to do, so even though we haven't heard about that in a couple of years, it's going to rear its ugly head in a financial way, ugly in a financial way, I'm sure the salmon love it, but this is gonna be a big deal, and I, you know, at some point, maybe you guys, or Joe, or you could make a presentation and kind of remind us what our needs are here in Waukam County in terms of how this is gonna impact, because we have, what, over a thousand miles of roads, and a lot of those coverts ain't gonna fly anymore, so, and the cost is just enormous for the replacement of those things, when done in accumulative, I mean, the cost for the state overall is gonna be huge, WashDOT hasn't even begun to deal with, they, they don't have money to do it, and, you know, it's, it's gonna be interesting to see, but I just wanted to give you a heads up, not to be gloom and doom here, but this will be impacting, I think, based on what I've heard, gonna be impacting counties in particular a lot more.
Mr. Brown?
Got something positive to end on?
So, while we're on the topic of water, there will be a water, one of the water forums, there's been several water forums in the last couple of months, the next water forum will be held here at 9:30 on Saturday, June 14th.
And who's the moderator?
And I'm moderating a particular forum, but I'm not the sponsor of the forum.
Is that another one of the Grange forums?
Yes, it's one of the Grange forums, I just happen to be moderating.
All right, good. Anything else for the good of the order? Ms. Brenner?
Quickly, next year, you guys, go to the taste of tourism, I mean, it's always fun, they win a lot of awards, and they talk about them, and the whole, you know, they elect new officers, and then a whole bunch of different eating establishments put out food, and you just walk around in a daze for two hours eating these wonderful, the wonderful food they have, so it's fun, you should go.
All right, so no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you.